It's January 11th and this is the Addison Township Board meeting. I want to introduce everybody, who stand up for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic through which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please stay standing. Here, Lord, now guide us with your wisdom. Guide the audience as well. In the Lord's name we pray, amen.
Okay, we're here at the offices at 1440 Ratchet Street Road. And we're ready to go. We have roll call.
Yes, Eric Sen.
Yes.
I'm here, present, and ready for it. John Hunter, absent from call. Lori Fisher, here. Bennett present, supervisor person.
Present, okay. Any announcements?
No.
Petitions?
No.
Have reports as usual available in my office. I have approval on the agenda.
I'd like to add as number nine, the No As 216 agreement. I would like to make an erosion to approve the agenda as presented or amended.
And we want to skip number two by any chance?
I would like to ask the board to skip number two.
To withdraw?
Withdraw number two.
Okay. My motion still stands. It would be amended agenda to add number nine of the No As and remove number two of the agenda.
Is there any discussion on that?
Who supports that amendment?
Number two, aren't you?
She supports.
Oh, she supports, I couldn't hear her. You got to speak up.
Listen to my voice.
Oh, okay. There's no discussion on that, I have to leave roll call on that now, please.
Eric Sen.
Yes.
I break field.
Yes.
Lynn Garret.
Yes.
Lori Fisher.
Yes.
Bennett, yes, supervisor person.
Yes. Okay, we'll move to item number one, it's the consent agenda.
Before the board this evening, December 14, 2015 minutes. Bills as paid for December 2015. Authorized payment increase for our OPC from community projects of $434.35. $100 gift certificate for services rendered the fireplace to fill out from the community account also.
Hey, have you made any questions on that? There's no questions, we have roll call on that, please.
I had a motion yet.
Right, I'm moving red here.
Well, I've read the minutes, but I don't know if I'm authorized. I can I make the motion? Because I did read the minutes and I have no issue with them. I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as raised. I'll support it.
Okay, now do we have any discussion? Are there any roll call on that?
Lynn Garret.
Yes.
Lori Fisher.
Yes.
Eric Sen.
Yes.
Bennett, yes, supervisor person.
Yes. Well, we'll move on to item number three, which is the OPC nutrition agreement 2016 through 2018. As you know, when we were building the new location here, we had to temporarily move OPC nutritional part over to the fire hall. And I'm expecting that we'll be back in here full force again in February. And the agreement is to revert back to the prior agreement, which was the $5,000 per year. And to know we were paying a little extra for share just to go to the fire hall there until we got moved back in here. Does anybody have any discussion on this?
I'm good. Comment, I've read both. There's basically no change at all from 2000, for the 2016 to 18, dollars, for dollars. I would like to make the motion, we approve the OPC nutrition agreement 2016 to 18.
I'll support it.
Hey, do you have any discussion? Are there any? Are you from OPC, Renee? Yes. Uh, there's no, nothing that we're going to discuss on this.
Speech, I'd like to hear a speech.
Well, if you'll stand by, we'll give you a tour after the meeting, though. Okay, so if you have a nerve. But anyways, I'll take a roll call on that, please, roll call, please.
Eric Sen.
Yes.
Lori Fisher.
Yes.
Lynn Garret.
Yes.
I break field.
Yes.
Bennett, yes, supervisor person.
Yes. Move on to number four. Ordinance 16-1, ordinance to amend the code of ordinances, Chapter 66, Article 1, Section 66-1 and 66-2. This is what they call the super drunk law or whatever. And this is just, and the reason that we have to do this is, you know, that we can only enforce ordinances up to 90 days in jail or whatever. This happened to be a 93 day ordinance, and so we had to adopt this. But in February 2012, Governor Snyder had signed a legislation that allows Michigan City's towns and villages to prosecute the super drunk drivers. Drivers whose blood alcohol levels exceed .17. Generally, local ordinances may not impose penalties beyond 93 days or $500 fine. But the new legislation allows local prosecution of the super drunk law to impose penalties in the maximum jail sentence of up to 180 days and a fine of $700. That's why this has to be brought forward. So local municipalities can enforce the super drunk law if they have an ordinance already in the Michigan Motor Vehicle Code. But if your municipality is already prosecuting drunk drivers, there is likely no need to update the current offense ordinance as long as it adopts the Michigan Motor Vehicle Code. But even if your municipality has adopted that Motor Vehicle Code, it will be necessary for your municipality to specifically adopt the increased penalties of 180 days in jail and a fine of $700 for violation of the ordinance. Takes, if it takes the right underlying steps, then municipality has two options. It can prosecute the super drunk drivers under the new law and enforce the steeper penalties to go with it. And it can refer those cases to their respective county prosecutors. What I'm looking for tonight is a discussion and a motion to proceed with this ordinance, so we can start advertising at a public hearing. And if we have any questions, our commander in the Sheriff's Department here, Tom Weir, is here. If anybody has any questions, does everybody understand it?
I understand it very well. Matter of fact, this might help Officer Weir to keep the, somebody from killing someone. If they realize there's going to be a little bit unnoticed that there's a stiff penalty going to be involved with this thing. I think that, I would like to make a motion that we send this into a public hearing, and let's take it from there.
Is Mr. Davis review this ordinance?
Mr. Davis created this amendment. I support, I think it's a good thing to have.
Okay, we have a motion and a support. Any comments? Are there any, do we have roll call on that, please?
Lynn Garret.
Yes.
Eric Sen.
Yes.
I break field.
Yes.
Lori Fisher.
Yes.
Bennett, yes, supervisor person.
Yes. Okay, move on to item number five, Addison Township renovation expansion update. Well, sidewalks are poor, right? We have sewage.
We are still looking at the first week in February if cabinet briefly on, so it's still on course. Nothing will be other than.
And the champagne's on ice.
Yeah.
Everybody knows. I was just going to say the sidewalks are poor. Eric Eisenhardt put in the parking lot on Saturday. I was out here with him and his son came out and helped. And they used their mobile and their equipment, they donated that. And then they came back and today I saw Tim, your representative from ReWALL, was out there with shovel and everything helping them. And the grab was in that new parking lot now. And we got it in just a minute of time because the weather now has really changed. Mr. Dan Davis, the guy, the gentleman from Addison Township that donated the roof was out. I had a real nice conversation with him. He's very proud of the way the building looks and extremely happy that he was able to help us out. The atrium is almost done now. They're going to put canvas all the way around and put heat in there and then we'll finish the interior of that. So that maybe by the end of the week, that will be done. I think they're going to start roofing it tomorrow. Burke is finished. B&amp;B Well Building came out Saturday. I met him out here. We chlorinated the wells completely. And Doug Lowe came and helped. And we let that sit overnight. And B&amp;B Well also donated part of the cost to that. I really appreciate them doing that. And then we came back on Sunday and we flushed the whole system. So now our well system is completely chlorinated and in good shape now. Clock is up and working, you notice that. We're still within our budget. And Doug Lowe came over and he installed the water softener system and the filtration systems. Now we have the filter in here, we have a water softener system. Our water is good, big improvement. So I just wanted to give them.
Any work, we have a work at our solution for the light.
Yeah, so you notice there's a shadow on the lights and.
I'm at Ross and then the.
And so we have electricity to the bottom and they're just trying to figure out the cable outage that we have to put up to do away with the shadow there. So we're experimenting on that, but I think they have it pretty much, they did a little study on it. I think they have it under control now. We'll just have the lights put up there and then take away the shadow.
I do want to say, as I said, Dan Davis, any business you can throw at me, he's been wonderful to work with. And then there's actually been a slight change in the roofing of what he's drawing was to make it work better in this area that we've torn down now, now that it's down. And not even one day yet, nobody's got it, so.
I would very.
Usually when we have a time right there, it's always saying, oh, it's more money, it's more. So for him, it was not bad for him doing as much as he did for not to do it. It's a lot, I mean, you step up and say something about wanting a little money.
Well, I'll be able to meet him, as I told you, but I want to make sure that he has a formal invitation to come to our grand opening. And I'd like all the citizens to meet the man who gave us so much. And you'll see, really nice man, you'll see why he gave so much, you know, so. Okay, let's see, let's go on to facility use agreement, which is item number six. As you know, before we used to have, the senior room was built with CDDG money, that's community block grant money. And so we have provided restrictions. We did not use that now. So the community room, I think, can be used by the community now. So we're just trying to figure out what is a plunder of the board is how we want people to have. Know that it's automatically free for the seniors, anything they want to do, whether it be their Upright at night, which you know Thursday nights is just a very popular thing in our area. It's packed. And they have their meals on wheels and their lunches in here. And now we have a fireplace for them and everything and lots of windows. I think it's really going to be used. As far as the residents, it's open for the residents. But we have to give some kind of foundation here, some kind of rules or a cost to have somebody here from the township to close up and open up for them or whatever. So we'll have to pay somebody maybe an hourly fee just to be here when the rooms are open. Like I said, homeowners, any association, anything like that, it will always be open to anybody in the community. And it has to be rented by somebody from the community. So does anybody have any suggestions or anything? I think you all had this in your packet and you kind of read it. Item number three, when it says food or allow beverages are not allowed in meeting, this is the meeting room, not the, not the community room. So that you see, the next item says that we can have it in the title area and the community room. I just wanted to make that distinction. And it says no alcoholic beverages. That's if you rent the place, there are no alcoholic beverages. We're not insured to admit for rental, okay? It's the board's option, what we wish to do, rentals are not legal for that. Anybody have any questions? Yes.
I have a couple of questions. Number eight, and then I see there's a bullet point over under number nine that also expands on that. If called out seniors are exempt, I'd like to, the board to consider any maybe other nonprofit groups? And then how would we, how would like a Boy Scout group, that scouting program fall under?
Any resident business, government, or the, or the like requesting to use a facility more than once unless on the park. But the homeowners associations and other government agencies are exempt.
Right, there's, they're going to have to, I guess it just never really called out nonprofit groups. And then they don't know really what scouts fall under, it's not really a business. I'm not sure how their insurance is set up. Do they, does each, then, I guess they're called, I'm not sure if they have a separate insurance policy.
It's this bullet point, you know, you're right, scouts are not called out. Addison Township homeowners association and boards, we use a facility as available at no charge for their annual meetings or as their bylaws determine. We never had groups such as scouts in before.
The only thing I can say is that scouts, I'd like tomorrow night, I'm giving a speech for the scouts, for their government, community badges and stuff. And I know they meet at churches and stuff. And I would be fine with them meeting here also. The only thing I'd have to say is that somebody's going to almost have to be here. Unless the scout master is a resident or something like that, obviously irresponsible. But we might put in there unless, you know, can be approved by the township supervisor or whatever, as long as somebody wants to be responsible. We can interview and find out what it's about. I don't really want to add something.
Do you want to add nonprofit? And then the only other thing, and this is why we're bringing it up for discussion. We were worried in the past about having a group put in permanently for like every week because then it limits, for example, elections. I close off this room for basically a week so that I can train and all the election equipment set up. Then we have this planning commission and the park committee. It's very hard to tell, oh, I'm sorry, he can't meet this week. So that's something to consider too. Do we want to tie up the bill every night of the week? And I don't care, but it's just a thought that we need to discuss.
More than the scouts, I guess I was thinking we have another nonprofit group that used to meet monthly. And I just didn't, I see seniors is called out, homeowners associations, I didn't see nonprofit groups. So I'd like to consider today adding that. And then.
The only problem is, is you get, there's nonprofit organizations which would be like AA or something like that, and they're always going to be, you'd want to, you know, open ourselves up to that because how do we distinguish between? I would say anything to do with township business, like library, Boy Scouts.
Township nonprofit.
Somebody could say my baby shower is a nonprofit group.
Yeah.
I think we're just, you know, somebody could say my baby shower or my party is a nonprofit group. How do we distinguish that? Is this something we need to think about a little more?
Well, a nonprofit group usually, I guess, formal documentation is filed with the government, so they would have to reduce that. I would have to add something like that.
Free scene.
Yeah, file was free scene. And I would have to say that it should be something related to Addison Township. We shouldn't be allowing.
Well, I think somebody from another area would necessarily come here. Right, that could be Addison Township, nonprofit.
I got a real basic question. How is this whole process going to take place? Do you fill out an application? And who does it go to? Will that clerk?
It comes to the office, yes, it comes to the office. Like we have a calendar and we mark down all the days that it's used.
Okay, and then it's your discretion to approve or not?
Only for most of the events, yes, but then there is.
Special cases, right.
Well, it's the one here that it says, any resident, business, government, or the like requesting to use a facility more than once or on a continual repetitive basis must obtain township board approval. So this would go to when we would add the nonprofit. We're exempting them from fees, but they would have to come to the township board for approval.
Well, maybe we could put some kind of warning in there that if anything out of the ordinary comes along, it has to go through the board. You know, words without effect, whatever it may be. I don't, we don't know yet. We don't really know, you know, what, who wants to use it.
Correct, so like if the Cub Scouts would come, that's out of the ordinary. At one point in time, I had somebody who asked if they could reserve this to teach P90X classes. So that he was going to come to the board, but then I realized he wasn't a township resident. So those types of requests that are going to be used on a continual basis would come to the township board.
And that's a distinction.
Yeah, and then, and I think we'll grow with that, you know, we'll learn and we'll adjust.
I can see this being adjusted in the future, once we find out.
Yeah, it's a good start.
So I agree that like if the Boy Scouts want to have their meeting once a month here or whatever, there's no problem coming to the board. Hasn't us agreed to that? That one fits in and we make the recommendation. I think that's more reasonable. The males have any more comments on this?
What about using the score parties?
I'm sorry, Lynn?
Using, using the community room for parties? How is that if somebody had a party and events, a shower?
That one is going to be charged $25 per hour unless we change that. And we can, because the $25 per hour has been a, a, it's been established for a very long time. So the application is attached here and they would fill out the application just like anyone else. And they would be charged $25 an hour. And somebody is going to be, you know, somebody will be here for parties, not for the business type meetings, but for the parties. And then it's Bruce's thinking, I guess it'll be the board decision whether we're going to have somebody here or Bruce's decision for the Cub Scouts or something like that.
Well, if it's a township resident who comes and speaks to me and I know who he is and everything like that, I'm fine with them. And the police are here and everything, so I'm fine with that. But the parties, yeah, we will have a representative here because that part of that $25, he would pay their wages to, for them to be here. Ask you somebody they can ask questions to if there's.
I'll still to make sure that their cleanup is done too, because they are responsible for the cleanup.
Well, Bruce. Yes. It sounds like Eric hit the nail right on the head. This is a good start. Pauline finished it up by saying just can be reviewed again. And we can make modifications to it. I'd like to make a motion that we accept the changes on the facility use policy.
To include to add a nonprofit.
To include it, um, no, not to include it, just the way it is. And then if we have to review it again, then we can bring it back. Because I'm afraid we might be getting in over our heads just automatically jumping into the nonprofit.
We do already have one nonprofit, but it's normally used in the past.
Then they can come up to the township board and let us know. We'll be okay with it.
If you're talking about the.
Library.
I think they're part of township government.
It's part of the government.
That's, that would not be included in this.
They're.
I don't understand how that would be part of township government.
The library is.
Correct.
They're.
But they have, they have used this in the past and they're a branch of the library, so I think that that could go down in that room.
The way I'm reading it, Addison Township home, a homeowner association and boards may use a facility. I thought that would be the Landbury Prince Library.
Like the late board uses it, so that would be okay.
Okay.
And if you want to make a change in the future.
No, just change that up.
Who does the flowers in the front here? Is that the friend of the library?
No, it's, in the past couple of years, it's just been.
Seeing the motion.
Yeah. So how is the motion now?
Accepted.
Just as is and that we have the understanding that the friends of the library are included.
Yes.
In this agreement, that we don't have to spell them out anyway. Okay.
I'll support it then.
So we have a motion and a support. Any other conversation on this? Not hearing any, roll call on that, please.
Eric Sen.
Yes.
Lynn Garret.
Yes.
I break field.
Yes.
Lori Fisher.
Yes.
Bennett, yes, supervisor person.
Yes. Okay, move on to the budget review here. I'm just going to go through the pages here real quick here and let you look at them here. Let me see. You know, the budget's a pretty good budget. We've done well as far as the revenues coming in this year. Our revenues for property taxes are up about $34,000 and revenue sharing is up approximately $16,000. Our carryover is projected to be just under $70,000. The sums on page one, does anybody have any questions on page one? Okay, I've already looked at that. Just go on to page two. Page two, 103, these reflect possible increases in cable reimbursement based on revenue. We also have clerical wages where our employee dues, fees, and other areas are slightly increased. Elections, we have three big elections coming up, so we'll see the increase in that. The audit and legal fees are same at both renew the agreements, so we'll increase on that. Anybody have any questions on page two? Here, we'll go on page three. The assessor is down to the rates and the hours and Derek Steele is doing a really good job. He's fitted, fit into our organization very well and we like him a lot. The clerk department is up. If there's ever a time that we need a deputy clerk or whatever, she should have the same choices I do or the treasurer does to have a part-time or full-time deputy. The township hall has increased a little bit. I expect some repairs on the porch in the light hall. I've got in contact with the auxiliary there. They showed me a problem there, we'll be fixing. The cemetery is another area and we have done a lot of conservation during the recession. But there are two improvements. One is, I think, to expand the actual plot area and we need engineer for that. And we also are looking into, Pauline brought up, it's become very important, I think, for cemeteries to have like a place for cremains. And I think that's a really good idea because as our cemetery fills up, people are now putting the ashes into big monuments. Something we want to look into. I think Paul, they'd get a couple of estimates this year, somewhere maybe $6,000 to $10,000. But once you put that up, that holds how many?
They vary from company to company and then they're expanding while, so like this is just one wall. So I would probably try to get a few more bits. Most of them are out of state and I'd like to get one that's in Michigan.
But as you know, there is going to be a time where our cemetery will fill up. And it's, we are going to have to open up another area to survey. But a lot of people are requesting this now. This is something that I guess we should put in there and then also save some of the land in the cemetery so it won't fill up so quickly. That was page three. Anybody have any questions on that? Okay, now move on to page four. Page four difference is the proposed township road chlorine. I think it's time, like I said, we invested all this money into the gravel and they're going to expand. I had a meeting today with the township supervisors over in Highland. And the road commission was there and they're expanding. They're going to add another million dollars, so I think it's going to go up to $2 million if they're going to bring in and the road commission, $2 million from them, $2 million from the county. And then we'll be able to benefit a little bit more on gravel. But I'm taking the advice of the road commission. I haven't steered this wrong so far in the last seven years. Our roads have dramatically improved. And they say now that we put the gravel on, we need to keep it there, so the chlorine, almost nearly, we chlorate all of the roads. And we do have the money here. Building expenditures are winding down. We're just about paid up on the building here, so Lori will have that taken care of with the financing on that. Anybody have any questions on that? Okay, we'll move on to page five. This is an estimate for the loan on the building. Treasure, what it says, working on that with the Oxford Bank. Anybody have any questions on that? Okay, we'll move on to police funding, which is page six. And you can see the revenues increased by $109,465. I'd like to thank Enbridge, the oil company that do it for that. Very nice gift for all the townships that they went through. Anybody have any questions on that? And the same, if you move on to page seven, you'll see that the fire department are, I believe it's fire. Oh, here we are. And the contract increased, okay, approximately $77,000. And the items remaining are. And the items, remaining ones are pretty much the same on page seven there. So the only thing that I can see is that in the chair's budget, what did we have, a carryover of $1,000? What was the carryover in that?
The carryover was $1,000 at the condition. So last year, your carryover was $30,000. This year, it was $1,200.
$1,200 carryover. Don't spend that $1,200. Your copy.
Right.
Where are we at now? Okay, now we're back on to page eight. Page eight, we've got a slight increase on the cell towers. I don't have any grants in the workings right now, doesn't mean that I won't have, but at this time I don't have any. Anybody have any questions on the parks? Okay, we'll go to page nine, budget for the parks and recreation. I'm proposing to keep the expenditures the same, but as you know, the money that you give me there, I have so many volunteers that come and help. Like I said, the labor was donated, Mike Flower, a retired deputy that's a network. Right now, the interior of the schoolhouse is almost finished. We're onto the floor now. Gene Lillard has gone in with his son-in-law, and the wiring, everything's been donated. The heat is on in there, air conditioning, I'm getting close. It's been a while, but I know I do this with volunteers, and I'm up there with them. And I've got a lot of projects this year I've been doing, so hoping next year I can finish them all, so. Let me see, that was page nine, right? Anybody have any questions on that? Well, the public notice speaks for itself. As you know, we have to have a public hearing for the public, so we listen to any suggestions and allow for any changes. I think the motion will be in order, see with the public here on February 8th, if you so please. I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Not hearing anything. We'll follow that, please.
Lydick Garrett?
Yes.
Roy Fisher?
Yes.
Eric Seid?
Yes.
At Breakville?
Yes.
Bennett, yes, supervisor person.
Yes. Move on to item number eight. Resolutions can be adopted, number one, this is a wage resolution. A resolution should be adopted, one motion calling each hour before a lot of the legislative proposals modest 2% increase to wages as listed in the exception to the clerical wages. And as you know, we talked about this, it's very hard to get clerical people here, so we've changed the system a little bit. We took out the two-tiered system, the clerical and administrative system to the term of office assistant now. This will bring up the wages to retain the tried future employees. Boards, the commissions are receiving a $5 per meeting increase. Again, it was modest increases. Anybody have any questions on that?
Yeah, I got a question. So with this increase, are we still going to outsource the clerical?
The only reason I brought that up is if I was in a bind, I would have a backup. So hopefully we will never have to use it, but it's nice to know that if I need to, it would still be better. So if I don't need to use it, no.
So this office assistant could be full-time?
I'm sorry, what was that?
The office assistant previously was part-time, is it now going to be a full-time person?
No.
The budget reflects in the budget, it reflects the same amount of powers currently. There are two, and there is no area in there for occupancy or insurance, so that's still shown to remain part-time position.
Superintendent?
Yep.
Do you want to make a resolution on that?
I'd like to move the resolution for the supervisor treasurer, Sally Resolution for 216, and the clerk's resolution.
Well, just don't move the clerk's one if you don't want it. But if you'd like it, you're going to make it too.
So anyways, I moved all the resolutions.
Can I look at this?
It's four resolutions?
Correct.
Okay. I'll support that.
And I will just say that staff here, everybody, the fire department, they all look hard. They've given it out for many, many years during the recession. I think everybody can see the improvement here. You can see how hard everybody's put in their time. They did everything way above and beyond what any other normal employees would be required to do, moving old buildings over, you name it, working during construction. I'm very proud of them, and I think a 2% increase is really not enough, but fits into my budget, and that's the best I can do. And I certainly do appreciate all that they have done for us. And like I say, you only look as good as your employees do a good job for you. This board looks exceptionally good because we have such good employees, so. So we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? We'll go and follow that, please.
At Breakville?
Yes.
Lydick Garrett?
Yes.
Eric Seid?
Yes.
Roy Fisher?
Yes.
Bennett, yes, supervisor person.
Yes. Resolution is so moved. Item number nine, no has, the resolution outlines everything, and you know we're part of no has. It's been a great thing. It gets rid of all our hazardous material. It's offered about four times throughout the county. Contract, your budget, the residents shall pay a nominal fee, I think it's worth $10, is it? And I forgot, I think the township pays $19, $19.25 per car. And Eric Seid was our appointed representative, but sometimes we pull you up and have somebody there, right?
That's an option.
That's an option.
Right.
Does anybody have any discussion on that? That's definitely a worthwhile project.
It's a great project. I would like to move the resolution for the no corporate hazards waste consortium. If, as a sidebar note, it would be really nice to have the use, Eric, if you go to a meeting, have maybe a three-year contract instead of yearly.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion?
I'll support it.
And we have support. Any further discussion? Are hearing any, if we ever will call that, please.
Lydick Garrett?
Yes.
At Breakville?
Yes.
Eric Seid?
Yes.
Roy Fisher?
Yes.
Bennett, yes, supervisor person.
Yes. Okay, public forum. Anybody in the public who'd like to speak, please speak. Would you like to say anything or anything today? No?
Are you excited about the new building?
Well, we haven't seen it yet.
Oh, she doesn't pay her nickel.
I know. And we have enforcement right here for the nickel. And he puts it between his teeth too, and he checks it, okay? Okay, I'm not hearing anything on public forum. Any Addison Township board reports? Okay, legal reports.
There is our planning commissions that are canceled as well, so.
No legal reports at this time. Communications followed. Supervisor report. Oh, here, I got to read you something here because we goofed up last time, guys, okay? I got to read this just so that we can, because, you know, when we had the public hearing for the CDDG, when I opened up the public hearing, I forgot, we're not supposed to speak until I close that public hearing, so. The public, and we were in error last month, we offered every opportunity for the public to speak, but we as a board participated in the public hearing portion of the meeting. We're not supposed to do that. That was incorrect. We all know better, and it happened. We got talking and...
I'd make a motion that Keith just wrapped you up right now. That's what he's here for.
And that's what right here, that right here says, if Ted was full of it, you know what's...
Yeah, I'm lucky I was at the meeting.
We all know better. We just have the public hearing and the time for the public to speak to us to give us their input. It's where we sit and listen prior to the opening of the public hearing, and then after I close it, then we're allowed to speak, okay? So let me see, the township employee policy in our facility, this is something, this is really important, and we'll listen to this very closely, okay? And our, the township employee policy in our facility use agreement states no alcoholic beverages reserved for other township residents. We do not have a policy for township board hosting a grand opening. I'd like to serve a glass of champagne. It's very important, listen to it. I serve a glass of champagne at a grand opening event, and if there are any objections, please let me know. And if I don't hear any objections, I already bought the champagne. But if somebody would like to object...
So if you're an employee, you can have a glass of champagne? Well, that's okay, I'll just take it.
Yeah, okay. Okay, so I don't hear any objections, okay? The other thing I'd like to say is I did contact DTE, Mike Francesco, today about the outages up on Oakwood and Osner, and Oakwood and Lake George, they were at Rochester. There was a small area on the back road, but the majority of the township where they put all the new lines and everything, we didn't even have a flicker. So whatever they did on that big improvement on Rochester Road apparently must be working and just have to work on, I guess, the areas where their electricity comes from the Oxford area where we have the outage. And it was due to a tree, so I did leave a big dislocation about how we'll get another grant and we'll take all the trees out of that area also. Other than that, I don't have anything else except that I'm very proud of the building we're progressing, and I hope by the end of this month, we should be wrapped up, except for the mess we're going to have to avoid. Other than that, I'm entertaining the journey.
I'll make a motion for that.
I'll second. Did we get you out in time to the Alabama game?
Yes, I did.
We'll be doing very much. I have something to say about, I need to, if you're ready to return, say aye.
Aye.
And in the polls, we are hereby adjourned. Now we will give you a tour.